Hello and welcome to the Select Board meeting for January 22nd, 2024. Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I don't think there's anybody here for open forum, but is anybody here for open forum?
Right, be open forum.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right, he's here for open. We just talked about that, didn't we? Yep. I know. We're timing you.
Good evening.
Good evening, please tell us who you are and why you're here.
The Bicentennial Committee. The Bicentennial has ended as of December 31st. But we did have one event that got rained out and we have decided that we're going to hold it this Saturday right here at Town Hall. It was supposed to be a Scoutarama featuring all of our Scout troops, including Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, Brownies, Cub Scouts, Venture Scouts. We were supposed to have a camp out at Sation Rock. That got canceled, but we already had the T-shirts for them, so we said we better do something. So this Saturday, the public is invited to come down here to the Town Hall from 10:00 to 2:00. And we are going to feature and talk about the history of scouting in East Bridgewater, all phases of it, and scouting today. And it'd be an opportunity to, if you've got kids involved in that age group, it's for kids from, I think, seven years old right through 18. And if they're looking for some adventures and don't know about the scouting, this would be a great opportunity to come on down. And someone, one of the girl groups, the Girl Scout groups will be selling cookies. I did find that out, which is always a bonus.
That should bring in a crowd.
I hope that it does. And there'll just be some displays and demonstrations and so on. It should be a nice social evening and I especially invite any of our alumni scouts that have been through the scouting program to come down and say hello because we're going to have a lot of pictures from days gone by. And at the same time, we are going to be having our final pop-up sale with the Bicentennial and decided to do it the same day because we figured, what the heck, get everybody out. We will be having, I don't know if liquidation is the right term, but we have some T-shirts. Well, you know, they're already collector's items, I've seen them on eBay already.
I don't know if it's collectible if it's a surplus.
Cheaper than we sold them for. But no, it's a great collector's item and if you didn't get one, come on down. The prices will be whatever we mark up for that day. And we also still got candles and a few other things, a lot of stuff sold out, but... So we're going to be here that day with members of the committee selling the products. So come on down.
Any questions?
That's all I got. Oh, any questions?
And now will I be in this room?
The sale will be in this room, the scouting program will be upstairs, and maybe if the weather's good out in the front lawn too, if they're doing any outdoor demonstrations. So that's about the word. It should be a nice day from 10:00 to 2:00. The sale is going to be from 9:30 to 2:30.
I think some Dutch oven cooking demonstrations on the front lawn of the Town Hall would be very nice.
I have to check with the fire chief.
He said no.
He said no.
Thank you.
All right, thank you Dale. Okay, so we will now open our public hearing. Close open forum, open the public hearing.
This is continuation. 6:30 PM notice is hereby given that the Select Board of East Bridgewater, Town of East Bridgewater, acting as the local liquor license authority, shall hold a hearing to determine whether the liquor license at 14 West Union Street, the Idea Club, shall be revoked in or not renewed due to failed inspection of the fire escape in said establishment or a non-compliance in bringing said fire escape up to code in order for the fire escape to pass inspection. Hearing will be held at Town Hall, Main Conference Room, East Bridgewater, Massachusetts, 02333 at 6:30 PM on Monday, January 8th, continued to today, which is Monday, January 21st.
22nd.
22nd, 2024. As said hearing, you shall have the opportunity to call witnesses and cross his name, the opposing witness, if any, in a reasonable fashion.
Okay, do you want to come up to the table? And if you could just tell us your name?
Val Masero.
Okay. And I understand that there was an inspection that happened today?
Today.
And the email that I have here from the chief said that, that's the wrong one, this one. There's no need for additional hearings after tonight, that everything was acceptable other than a couple, right, chief, other than a couple of emergency lights that they're going to...
There's a couple of small outstanding issues that should not have a problem.
Couple of lights, exit lights were not coming on, so I think it's the bulbs.
Okay.
An electrician is going to go look at it.
Okay, so that part's all set, but Charlie, did you have some questions?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, there were times, there have been publicity flyers and such indicating that you serve food there. Are you going to continue serving food there?
No, we, we've never... The way it works is like a family affair, it's a community-based, cultural, social club. It's fully members-only.
Right.
And when we have food there, it's the members that bring in the food. We don't make food there, we've never made food.
So you have a potluck?
Yes, since 1981.
So it's a potluck?
Everybody brings something.
That's right. And well, we try to coordinate it so that nobody makes the same thing. So, but that's about it.
Okay.
We don't sell, cook, or make anything there.
Okay.
And then...
In fact, our stove doesn't even work anymore, so...
Okay.
And then, in terms of entertainment, you've had events there that would normally need an entertainment license from the town. Are you going to continue having anything like that?
No, I'm not aware of...
So no musicians or bands or singers?
That we have because it's a cultural type of thing.
Right, but you sell tickets for that?
No.
No?
Suggested donation, this is all from members. So, some people give less, some people give more to help the club out. We're in a dire straits right now, I'll be honest with you. We just had to spend $1,700 to repair all the things at the fire escape and then $950 for the license for the certification, the new certification, fire certification. And then, I'm new to this position, so I did not know about these life inspections that had to be done, nobody told me, but anyways. It's pretty much all done now, but we still have some issues with the sprinkler system. Right now, they currently have an auxiliary compressor there, but it's not the compressor, it's the switch, which the sprinkler system company here in town has ordered and they have, they need to get an electrician to go and install it and verify that and then get the report back to you, back to the town. So, but as far as the food's concerned, it's like a family thing, so...
And I'm good.
Is that them? Okay.
Yeah, so I'm a little confused, so they have a liquor license, that's what we're speaking about here. So, do you sell liquor? I mean, how does this work? So you said you have membership, let's start from the beginning, I guess. How many members do you have?
About, it used to be 150, I don't know currently, like I said, I just...
Do you have an annual fee that the members have to pay? Do you be a member, is there a membership fee or dues or...
Membership fee is $100 for family and $60 for individual. But that's...
That's just the annual, one annual fee that comes in?
Then we have three stores downstairs that we get $2,400 a month for the rent. And I had, one of them was a renter for months, we finally got somebody the last three months.
Okay.
And we're, we're out of money, to be honest with you. So, I don't know what's going to happen if the inflation continues. People just don't have the money anymore, so it's been tough.
So do you rent the, to the members, do you rent the hall upstairs as a rental fee?
Small fee for the, for the membership.
Okay.
And then they have, when they have their own function, they also bring their own food.
Yep, and you just serve the alcohol?
We just serve the alcohol.
Right, and I'm assuming you've got somebody that serves safe and they just...
We have a bar manager and a bar person.
That does each event?
It's the same person, actually.
Okay. All right. Yeah, yes.
David?
No, I have the same questions about, more concerned about the liquor.
Yeah, me too.
Right. Okay. All right, in that case, I'll take a motion to approve the license.
Close, close the public hearing.
First, I will close the public hearing, what would I do without you? I will close the public hearing and then I will take a motion to approve the renewal of the liquor license.
I'll make a motion to renew the license for the Idea Club 14 West Union Street for the, so the license run from January something?
December 31st.
Okay, as stated.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, you're all set now, thank you for coming in.
Appreciate it. Sorry, sorry I didn't make it last time.
Not a problem.
Okay, thank you.
This is another, well, we gotta wait, right?
Yeah.
I want to bring Chuck up now.
Yeah, why don't we do that?
So, under action item, C12, discussion and vote to approve agreement with the food pantries.
Mr. Haran, come on down.
Good evening.
Hey, tell us who you are, even though we know.
Yeah, Chuck Haran, I'm representing the St. Vincent de Paul, St. John's Conference Food Pantry in town.
Okay, this is your show.
Chuck, how much do you usually spend each month at the food pantry to distribute out to the people?
It's a combination, we have, we work through Greater Boston Food Bank, is the bulk of our food, but we also go out and purchase our own food outside of that, close to $1,000 per month.
Okay. All right, and again, this is money that the town had in the Bicentennial account at the end of December. And what this contract that we have in front of us is going to do is allow the town to give to the St. Vincent de Paul Food Pantry out of St. John's and the East Bridgewater Emergency Food Pantry out of the Union Convacational Church. And this will be a, as of right now, will be a one-time payment, possibly more to come later on, for $1,500 each. And once we get that approved, we will deliver that check. And again, I can't say enough, I see the cars lined up there at both St. John's and Union Convacational every month. And it's, obviously, it's a huge need for the town of East Bridgewater and the Bicentennial Committee. Way back when Dale and I talked about this almost two years ago now, if we had money left over, this was the agreement that we made with the committee. And we just received a response, oh, the committee is in agreement, that this is what we should do with that extra money.
Well, I'd like to thank you on behalf of the Food Pantry, St. John's and St. Vincent de Paul. It's unfortunate in this country that we have people in our country, in our state, and in our town that have food insecurity. And we're trying to do our best to help satisfy that need and serve our neighbors and we appreciate your help in helping us to do that. So we appreciate the offer and the donation and other donations like it from other folks in town, other organizations in town. So that's, that's how we survive and that's how we're able to help people. So we thank you for that.
Okay, thank you.
It's good to do. Do you need us to vote on this agreement?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
I'll make a motion to enter the agreement with the Food Pantry Services in East Bridgewater for the amount of $1,500 for each pantry, one-time payment.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, very good.
Thank you Chuck, thanks for all you're doing.
We know that you will put it to good use, as will the people at the Union Convacational.
In addition, I have a little form here, it's, in addition to food, we also help pay for rent and pay for oil. And this time of year, we're getting a big call for oil assistance. So there's a combination of food, rent, and other things we do as well.
How would people go about requesting assistance for that?
They would call the hotline at St. John's and we'll respond to them and we work with a local oil company in town, that's been very helpful to us. So it's a combination of different things, it's not just food, although that is the bulk of what we're known for, but there's other things that St. Vincent de Paul gets involved with as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks Chuck. All right, we are 6:45 on the dot. So let's open our next public hearing.
A hearing for the vote to approve common license, entertainment license.
Nope.
6:45.
I'm sorry.
That was the previous, yeah.
I'm sorry, yep. Notice is hereby given that the Select Board of Town of East Bridgewater shall hold a hearing and determine whether the Class II and Class III License at 300 Thatcher Street, All Foreign Auto Sales Service, Inc. and All Foreign Auto Salvage, Inc. shall be revoked and/or not renewed due to failed inspection of unsafe working conditions at the said establishment. The hearing will be held at the Town Hall, Main Conference Room, East Bridgewater, Massachusetts, 02333 at 6:45 on Monday, January 8th, 2024.
Great, thank you.
Aye.
Hi, Barry. Nice to have you back again.
I'm back.
I hear you've made some progress.
Thank you. Short version, I'm asking for two months' extension. I did plow away at a lot, there's a lot more to be done. They asked me to make a menu, a list, I don't know if you want me to read the list, what I proposed to do, or just, you know, I'm asking for two months to clear up everything.
Yep, and I understand that the chief, you're in agreement with that, with the eight weeks?
We would, I think the list should be in the record, I don't know if you have a printed list or if you want to read it.
No, I handwrote it.
Then let's get into the record, go ahead.
If you want to read through it, that'd be fine, and then we'll have it for the record, like Mr. Kluick said.
On the 18th Thursday, the building inspector, the chief, and the deputy chief came in to inspect my progress. We were, we had a good grip on the tire problem and they agreed that we, with the racking and the tires, that we did a good job. My concern was for tonight, was to get eight aisles clean because there's four aisles in one building and then there's four aisles in the other building. So while we were working, they came in and we had piles because we were separating our inventory and trash and whatever. We had piles and it didn't look like we had any progress in the aisles, but we did, we put a lot away. We talked, we talked about... Okay, so we talked about the cars that were outside the building. I had, I didn't want to get into this, but back in 1989, when we built the building, some guy that lives on this side of East Bridgewater claims that he was walking from Brockton, 2:00 in the morning, to come home to East Bridgewater on Thatcher Street. We had two German Shepherds that we were giving as puppies when we first started in 1985. In 89, they were like four years old, three and a half, four years old, whatever. He claimed that my dogs attacked them. So I knew that my dogs didn't attack them because they were friendly dogs and that we let people in the yard and the dogs were in the yard, loose, never chained up or any cages or anything. So I knew that this guy was lying. So lawyers sent letters to me, this is all true, I'm not lying, I couldn't make this up. Lawyers sent me letters and I said, "I'm not going to get my insurance company involved, I'm not going to get my lawyers involved, you've got to prove to me that my dogs bit him." So I contacted his lawyer and I said, "Look, if you prove to me that..." "I will bend down and I will pay anything that is asked of me." So we asked the guy five questions. One, tell me about what happened. He says, "Oh, two dogs bit me." I go, "Okay, you got that, I have two dogs." I go, "Describe the dogs, black and gray and white, whatever." I go, "Yeah, you got two." I go, "Tell me about the dogs." He says, "Oh, they're big." "Oh, okay, yeah, whatever, bigger than a breadbasket, well, you know, they're big." This is a joke, but... Number four was something else, but number five was the best one. I said to him, "You know, if a three-legged dog attacked you, why wouldn't you tell me first that the three-legged dog was the one that attacked you?" He said, "You got a three-legged dog? Oh, by the way, I forgot to tell you, the police came down and I had to quarantine the dogs." So the dogs were inside my new building that we built and we were working out of a construction trailer. So we got broken into, unfortunately, and they robbed radiators out of my, out of my shed. So then I got all mad and everything, I said, "This is a setup, I was set up," you know? So when I asked him about the dog, he never mentioned the three-legged dog. And then I said, "Buddy, why did you say the three-legged dog bit you? Because that's the most important thing, never mind big, gray, black, white, whatever, you saw two dogs." And my dogs never left my property, you said you saw them at the Brockton Animal Shelter, which was a lie. So I said, "When he found out that I had a three-legged dog, that was the end of him and his lawyer. It was all done." So from that day on, I told the chief and I told the deputy chief, I parked cars next to my glass windows. So the other day, when the chief came Thursday, when he came, he says, "Well, you got the cars near the building." I go, "Look, chief, if someone tries to break into my side windows, we're on a street with two, with two landfills and five salvage yards. Who's going to patrol this street at 2:00 in the morning? It's dead, no one's down that area." So I put the cars next to the building to protect the glass. So he says, "Well, they can break in anyways." I go, "Yeah, they can break in, but look, I only have enough room to squeeze, how much you, how many times you going to squeeze by in and out with inventory and stuff?" But that has been my philosophy since 1989. Now, I understand Chief Pratt changed it and he made it with the cars next to the building, I understand that. I agreed to move the cars. On part of this, I'm cutting real fast through this, I know you don't want to hear all this, but... The chief asked me to clean the passageways because he came down himself personally, we walked around, he says he'd like all the aisles to be the size of the doorways, which that we agreed to. He talked to me about my waste oil heater, it's not fully done because we're waiting for the plumber to come and put the air vent to go from the tank to outside. And then he saw some electrical outlets that he didn't like. So in, in the eight weeks that I'm asking for, the concern is, we're going to be, we're going to be purchasing land to the right of me and land to the left of me and we're supposed to be closing on February 5th. Soon as I get that, I have to ask permission if I can park some cars on it. Soon as I get that permission, I'm moving all the cars near the building and eight cars that are blocking three, two, three, two or three parking spots in front of the building to give the adequate parking that I'm supposed to provide. So the land and the parking is all going to go together. So... I'm going to cut through all of this. In summarizing, we're going to work two weeks at a time on different projects. We're going to, we're going to work on cleaning the aisles, we're going to have the electrician come in and check the, once we get everything cleaned, so he can come in and take a look. Then we're going to have the oil burner come in and then I'm going to move the cars. I might move the cars before the other two because the cars are outside and everything is inside. But with the progress that I believe that they saw, I think I'm okay.
Okay.
I'll be all right.
All right.
Is there an actual timetable for each of those things? I don't know how many things are on the list of what you and the chief are reading.
Well, my timetable, like I just mentioned a second ago, was I would, I gave four, two weeks at a time.
Right, but I don't know what happens in each two weeks.
I might, I might be able to do one in a week and I could go to the next one, but if I gave myself a little leeway, because the bottom line here is, the chief strictly said to me face-to-face, "He don't want to come back and I'm not done." He said that to me.
Well, you're going to go back in four weeks and then in six weeks.
No, I asked, I asked them if they could come back midterm to see progress.
Yeah.
Within one month, four weeks, yes.
And then six weeks.
I asked that, I asked that, yes.
So you'll, so that will, you'll know...
We're all going to be on the same page, you, him, me, everyone.
But is there a list of what, is there a list that was agreed to that these are the things going to be done after four weeks, these are the things that are going to be done after six, these are everything else that has to happen?
Well, I didn't, I didn't put it like that, but in the first, in the first, I got one, two, three, four on my page. So I figured two, four, six, eight weeks, okay? The first one was to clean the aisles and hopefully, eight aisles isn't going to take me two weeks. If I do that, I'm going to go right on the benches because he wants, he wants the clutter on the benches, the tools to be put away, inventory to be taken off, he wants it to be respendable, you know?
Well, let's make that the four-week mark, okay?
That's a, that's, no, the next, the next thing was whatever we have to repair, get the electrician in and everything, I figured two weeks, you got to make an appointment, come in, whatever, you know? The oil burner guy, I mean, we're going to try to overlap some of this because I can get the plumber to come in to do that, so we might get a little break here. And maybe, I'm not going to promise, but maybe in a month, we might be done. The cars is only a couple of days to move, I think we counted 16 cars. The loader can take care of that in a day or two. I just need the permission to put the cars on the new property because it's not licensed or anything yet, so if I get a temporary permission, then I would be great. Then I could come in and apply for the adequate permission.
Right, okay.
Chief, are you, do you need any more details along the timetable?
If I may, just, my number one, and I told Mr. Ferry this face-to-face that day, my number one priority is me sending my people into that building, if it's on fire, to do a rescue. I think we both agreed the other day that his building can burn.
I agree, that's what he's saying.
And I think my exact words, John, were, "My people come first."
He said that.
And then you and the general public after that because we have to win and save you.
He said that.
So we have 36-inch aisles throughout the building, which is the size of the actual man doors, that should suffice that. But he also has to live and maintain within his current license that was provided by the Town of East Bridgewater. He was also told that if he wanted to amend that license, that he would have to go before the Board of Selectmen and also, I believe, the Planning Board as well, as they created a special permit back in the 80s, don't hold it to the date, which he understands. So as long as in eight weeks that his property is in compliance with the license as it reads now, we should not have a problem.
That would bring us to a round.
March 11th.
March 25th would be, I think, about nine weeks.
Next meeting, yep.
So maybe...
Eight weeks would be the week before, but we won't be meeting that week, so the 25th, yep.
March 25th, we can set a continuation.
Do you have that, because Rebecca, you originally thought the 11th?
Well, yeah, because that's what Rebecca and I talked about.
3/25.
March 25th. 6:45? What, what, I don't know.
Would you rather do 6:30, we can do...
It's fine with me.
Why don't we say 6:30 on March 25th? Okay?
That's fine.
Okay.
Can I just, so that, I have cleaning the aisles, the electrician, oil burner, and what was the fourth?
Move the cars.
Move the cars, okay.
Is it possible to get copies that, that was read into the record?
What's that?
Is it possible to get copies of what Mr. Ferry wrote?
Do you mind if I take that and copy it?
No, I don't mind.
Okay. Peter, any questions?
Well, I don't care.
Charlie, Charlie, you come to favor? All right.
Motion to continue the hearing.
Are you making the motion or are you...
I'm just telling Peter to...
As stated.
Yes.
As a second? All in favor? Aye. All right, so...
I have a question.
Go ahead.
The building inspector handed me this special permit and I've read through the special permit.
Is that the one from 1988?
The one that's November 30th, 1988. This has been changed. You guys changed this. Because it says right here on the bottom that this can't be changed. And this re-permit was changed and I don't have anything stating that it was changed.
There's, there's a special permit that's issued by the Planning Board, that's not your Class II or III license. If you think there's a special, if you think the language of the special permit that you originally got was changed at some point, you know, look, we need to know what the difference was, but the Board of Selectmen handles the actual Class II and Class III licenses.
Right, right.
Which is a different thing than the special permit that's issued by the Planning Board. The Planning Board, the special permit is in essence a zoning permit that allows you that use on your property with certain stipulations. The license to operate the Class II and Class III business is through the Board of Selectmen. So they may have stipulations on that license, on the Class II and Class III license, that are different than the special permit stipulations. You need, you're governed by both, you're governed by the special permit that was issued by the Planning Board 35 years ago, but also the Class II and Class III licenses that are issued by the Board of Selectmen. So you need to maintain compliance with both. So, you need to maintain compliance with both.
If you look at the piece of paper you have in front of you, it's a special permit issued by the Office of the Planning Board.
Right.
That's where you have to be talking to.
Oh, okay.
If there's a difference because that's not...
So, why was this given to me then?
Because I think we wanted to make sure that you had a copy of it.
If you're saying it's changed, then you have to talk to the Planning Board to find out what you believe was changed on it.
Well, my licenses have been changed. So, this is...
So, the license is different than the special permit?
Oh, it's different?
The license comes from us. The special permit comes from the Landy Board.
It's right here. It says that no changes can, and conditions can be changed with herein without the prior written and approval of the Planning Board, whatever. So, I don't know why this was given to me if we're not even talking about this.
I think because at the hearing a couple of weeks ago, you referenced this. So, I think we wanted to see...
I didn't even know about this.
Well, you would've gotten it 35 years ago.
Huh?
You got that permit 35 years ago.
Yeah, but we weren't talking about this at the last meeting. I was talking about the license.
But you referenced 1988 when this was done.
That's when we started, yeah.
So, that's why we just wanted to see this.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, what I referenced was...
So, we had all the paperwork in front of us that relates to the property.
What I really referenced was that the license that was handed to me in 88 has been changed in 97. I think I authorized Chief Pratt to do it without me even coming here or anything like that. That was that license.
And that's what we issue.
Okay.
But the permit is the planning board.
Okay, okay.
Clear as mud?
I'm clear. I'm clear. No, no, I'm clear. I'm clear. I'm clear.
And if for some, if for some reason, you know, you have the license right now for Class 2 and Class 3, if you feel that the license, the stipulations need to be changed, you could come back to the Board of Selectmen.
I don't think I'm gonna ask for any changes. I don't wanna do this no more.
Okay.
I mean, I didn't wanna put steel bars up and I didn't wanna put them cages that come down in front of the door and make it look like Brockton. My building, at one time, by the chief of police, few chiefs back, he praised me because he thought I was a pizza parlor. Neither didn't think that I was a salvage yard because I have the red and white awnings out front and I have a clean-looking building from outside, you know? But with the clutter that I have now, it doesn't look very appealing to anyone.
All right. Well, we will see you back here on March 25th.
Just, I want to clarify a question. He's purchased two pieces of land on each side of the property.
Yes.
In order to use that land, he has to go before the Planning Board? Special permit all over again type thing? Okay.
Yeah, true.
To expand the operation on those two parts.
So, there's no confusion on your part. So, you might wanna schedule that like as soon as you pass papers?
Yeah. Because that's not us. That's us.
But then you're gonna have to say it's okay for me to use that land, right?
Yes, right, because the description of the property on your Class 2 and 3 license right now is your current property. You would come back to the Board of Selectmen at some point and say, "I want to expand the boundaries of my operations under the Class 2 or 3 license."
All right. So, I have to speak to Mr. Patrick Fanny?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
He would be the starting point. He's the zoning enforcement officer and building commissioner. And he would tell you, "Okay, here's the paperwork to get a new special permit or an updated or changed special permit." And you would start that process, likely dealing with the Planning Board.
The process that they're doing right now of proving the split lots, that's nothing to do what we're talking about, right?
Correct, because that's actually setting the boundaries of the land itself.
Oh, the boundaries of land.
And once you've done that, then you'll go back to the Planning Board and say, "I now want that special permit that you have to be expanded to include those."
I'm gonna have to talk to them tomorrow then. Okay.
All right.
We done?
Thank you. Yes, we are. I'm gonna close, close the public hearing and we will see you on the 25th.
Thank you, chief. You're welcome.
All right, let's do some action items. Action.
Okay. Prove the minutes of the January 8th, 2023 Select Board's meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Prove the minutes of the January 8th, 2023 Select Board Executive Session Meeting.
Do you approve but not release? Please. Could you do approve but not release?
Approve but not release.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Approve the date updated scheduled for February 20th, 2024 Special Town Meeting as printed, or should I go down every...
We, no, you won't have to go. I mean, the aim is, sorry, Carol, go ahead.
Second.
Second.
I would, my recommendation is to hold the meeting on the 20th. We should get bids in for the turf field on the 13th at this point. Brian has said he will have enough time then to bring the actual figure to town meeting with whatever contingency or any other fees that are needed. I do recommend that we put in a ballpark number. I mean, John Haynes had mentioned, for instance, 1.5. I'll get that confirmed with Brian. At least because if we don't put in any number, I mean, you're, it's not so much you're misleading, but you're not providing enough information to the townspeople, at least for how much money we would be talking about. It might, it may not be 1.5. It might be 1.3. It might be 1.7. But at least it'll be in the ballpark and tell people, "Look, we're thinking of spending this amount of money or around this amount of money on this project."
Okay. Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor? Aye.
Prove to close the warrant for the February 20th, 2023.
Should be 2024.
2024. Thank you. Special Town Meeting.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. So, Carol and I had talked a little bit about this and it's not necessarily we do anything. You do have this parcel of land off of Crescent and Washington Streets, around 52 acres or so, that is in Chapter 61. It's being taken out for a solar field. The town has to write a first refusal on it. We've gotten some comments from department heads. We had not heard anything from the general public at all. And I did put an action item on this because we hadn't heard anything from anybody. I wanted to get a little bit more time and a little more publicity in case there were residents who were interested. But our next meeting is gonna be too late if we wanted to put something about that on the warrant. I'm not saying you should. I just wanted you to know that if the Board wanted to move ahead to purchase the land after receiving comments from the department heads and the general public, that we would have to have another Special Town Meeting on that one issue. So, if you don't wanna put it on now, that's fine, but know that if you, at some point in the future, do wanna go ahead and bring this to town meeting, you know, to the townspeople, we'll have to have another town meeting.
It's a parcel of land that's surrounded by residential property. It's not, I mean, you said, somebody said something about a fire or a police department, but it's surrounded by houses all around with very little egress. Chuck Haran's here. You gotta have egress. I mean...
What have the comments been so far from department heads?
Department heads? All the department heads, the feedback that we've received was, you know, it might be a good opportunity, but, you know, due to funding and things like that, they can't really see putting money into something like that. If anything, it would be used for recreational possibly, but, or just leave it as open space. But that's about it from department heads.
Do we have time constraints on this at all?
Yes, it's, I believe, 90 days, something like that from when we were, so it would be fairly quick. We'd have to have another town meeting probably sometime in early March or something like that.
And how much?
My thought would be to let the property go.
Yeah, solar is passive. If even recreation, the people that live in that neighborhood with those two points, it's one from Crescent and one from Washington, right? So, anybody who lives there now, you're gonna have traffic coming in and out if you do soccer fields. Or, I mean, you all know what the soccer fields are like up on Belmont Street. You know, it just...
I wanna make a decision.
I think we'd be doing a disservice to that neighborhood to act hastily. And with the timeframe, the way it is, that's what we'd be doing. Plus, we don't have the money.
We'll talk about that later.
I know. I know. That's coming.
Could I, can I just quickly...
Sure, go ahead.
So, a couple of quick items. The purchaser is not a solar guy, number one. Number two, it's a Residence One district and solar's not allowed in a Residence One, commercial solar's not allowed in a Residence One district.
Yeah, but there are, I think, exceptions to that under Section 3 of 48.
Yeah, we'll skip that for right now. But the guy who's buying it's a residential developer. Two problems with that. We've looked at it multiple times in the past when Kim Wooditz owned it. It's now his heirs that own it.
Right.
And Kim had talked to us multiple times, starting way back in the early 2000s, about potential solar field. Laws were slightly different back then, but in any case, he couldn't develop it for solar and he tried several times to look at subdividing it. It's both high water table and pretty significantly impacted by wetlands. So, I'm thinking, and I think the Planning Board's thought is that the person buying it is looking at developing it for residential. The reason a property of that size has a, for residential development, has a relatively low price, I think, is because both of the wetlands impact and the high water tables. But the expectation is given who's projected to buy it as of right now with the name on the PNS that it's probably gonna be developed as residential property. And they really only have access through Crescent Street. Because the Washington Street access, you would have to directly cross a significant wetlands area before you could get to it. And they're not allowed to do that under current conservation rules if they have an upland crossing to get to it. And they have an upland access through Central, I'm sorry, Crescent Street.
How many house lots would you be talking about?
Really tough to tell because of the high water tables and the wetlands, but could be anywhere from five or six all the way up to maybe 10 or 12. I don't think it could get much more than...
I'd be surprised if it gets five.
Yeah, it's a tough piece of property for development, but...
Yeah, we still understand.
I mean, I don't wanna see us miss an opportunity for open space, but I just...
Well, let's see what we get for the next few weeks.
We don't have any money.
We don't have, right now, we're not gonna make that decision on any of them. If it comes back to us, we'll go to a special time.
Yeah. So, we have a motion to close the warrant.
Yep.
All in favor? Aye.
Thanks, Roy, for the additional information.
Yeah, thank you, Roy.
I just got some vote on special municipal employees that's listed with designated deletions.
Second.
Discussion?
So, this came up because I had a colleague ask me whether our Finance Committee were special municipal employees. Special municipal employees are sort of tied into the state ethics laws. They're not specific to individual people. They're specific to the various municipal offices. And when I asked Rebecca, we couldn't find anything in the files here. I asked Katie. She couldn't find anything in the files there. And so, I wrote back saying, "Okay, well, I don't think we, they are. I don't think anybody is." But I did know that under the law, the State Ethics Commission is supposed to get copies of documents anytime we do declare people or positions to be special municipal employees. Well, it turns out we've sent like six or eight letters at various times from the 60s on up listing special municipal employees. This is the entirety of all the lists combined. This includes, obviously, a number of positions that no longer exist. We do not have the Christmas Decorations Committee.
We don't?
Nope. We don't have, we don't have the George Washington Bicentennial Forest Committee.
And I wanna know what that was.
As an example.
Established in 1983.
Well, or that was when it was declared a special municipal employee position. What I am asking the Board is to confirm everybody except for the ones where we have the word "delete" on the list and we'll get an update and we'll have it in the Select Board office. We'll have it in the town clerk's office and we'll give an update to the Ethics Commission. This is not, I didn't wanna go through them one by one saying why one of them should be or not.
Thank you.
Yes. I just said, "I'll go with what the town has already said, but just bring it up to date."
All right. So, what are we doing here? We just going through the list?
You would prove this list excluding the ones that say "delete."
Yep.
So, making a motion just to do that right now currently?
Wait a minute.
As stated.
Well, there's...
Some of these I don't even...
Second.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the list with the designated deletions. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor? Aye.
Let's see. Approve, comment official...
Nope, skip.
Nope. Oh, skip, yep. Thank you. Six. Approve surplus request from IT Director Ryan Conical for HP LaserJet 4250 printer and an HP LaserJet 4601 printer.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
All right.
I think we're gonna be passing over eight.
I don't, yeah, she just walked out, so...
Yeah, we're gonna be passing over eight.
I think so. Well, yeah, eight or nine at this point.
We're gonna pass over that.
Both of them?
Seems to be a lot of confusion on that.
Okay. And 10, you have that update?
I kinda do, but I kinda don't. I wrote 10.
It's not an associate now.
We have to, I think we have to accept the resignation of Rosemary.
So, do that. Additional action item first.
Yep. All right. Accept the resignation of Rosemary Sakosha from the Council on Aging Effect of January 22nd, 2024.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Thank you, Rosemary.
Thank you, Rosemary, for a lot of the time I listened to the chair.
Thank you, Rosemary, for your help and your contributions.
Point, Michelle.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, now you can do this one.
Point, Michelle Bernard, as a just member?
Yes.
To the East Bridgewater Council on Aging for the period of January 22nd, 2024 through June 30th, 2027.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have just one thing.
Yep.
Since she'll be taking over as a full member.
Term different?
Her date will go through June 30th, 2025. So, then next year, she can be reappointed for three years. So, she's just kind of filling in for the rest of the term.
She's just filling the rest of that term. Okay.
So, just we'll amend the motion to be June 30th, 2025.
All right. Any further discussion?
Michelle's been a great help down at the COA. She volunteers for just about every event down there and I'm sure she'll be doing a great job on the COA Board.
Great. All right. All in favor? Aye. Thank you, Michelle.
Discuss and vote to approve payment policy for the...
Nope, did that.
Did that one too? 11?
Oh, no, sorry. Now I'm skipping ahead.
It's all right. Discuss and vote to approve payment policy for rental of the Center of St. Chomrock.
Center. Second.
Discussion?
Yes, what is the discussion?
So, this came up because I had somebody ask me why their final payment on the day of an event had to be in cash. So, I asked Charlie to look into it and we were told that it had to be cash because they'd had checks bounced in the past. But there was nothing in the policy that said that the final payment needed to be cashed. So, it's just adding that to the policy to make it clear to people when they rent.
And also that...
That's what to expect.
Anytime the receipt shall be given...
And they'll be, and they'll be given a copy of their receipt as well. So, it was just to clarify that.
That's fine. And again, if they pay upfront, then we don't get into that. We don't get into it that often. But that's the situations when we had those checks, that's when they were happening.
Yep. So, now it just makes it so people will know. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
We did, well, no?
Did 12.
Yeah, okay. That was number 12, yes. Discuss and possible vote town planner position.
Second of the discussion.
Charlie.
So, what you, the reason I didn't, I didn't want to just put this in the round file given the letter and given, it was from the chair of the Planning Board. But Mr. Riley had sent the Board a letter suggesting that, in fact, a town planner be included in the budget for fiscal '25. There were very good reasons, obviously, for doing so. We'll get into, you know, as he mentioned, however, there are fiscal challenges we're facing and it may not be feasible at this point. I understand it seems like it's never feasible, but given the fiscal outlook for fiscal '25, it's extremely unlikely that we would be able to set aside sufficient funding for a town planner. This isn't, like I said, this isn't arguing whether one's needed. It's arguing whether we can, in fact, come up with money to do so. I believe, you know, I talked to Rebecca, I guess, before getting here. The town had started that process and realized, I mean, I was told something like 125, something give or take, around there would be necessary to get a competent person to come in here. I don't disagree with that number, but obviously, we're under fair amount of constraint. So, I didn't wanna slough this off. I didn't wanna just say, "Okay, well, sorry." You know, told Kevin, "Sorry, it ain't happening." I wanted to make sure the Board was aware of the letter from Kevin and that, you know, to give it proper importance and put it on the agenda and bring it to the Board and go from there.
Yeah, I mean, I know we talked about it a few years ago. I think it was right after I got elected.
We've talked about this position when I was on the Board with Roy a thousand years ago.
And from my way of thinking, if we were gonna create a new position... And from my way of thinking, if we were going to create a new position and we had money for a new position, this would be the next logical position we should create.
11.
But, but right now, we want to keep the people we have. I don't know, Peter, I imagine you have thoughts on this too?
Yeah, we, no, we, we went down the road, we actually went out and, and solicited online, I think we put it maybe on Indeed or something, just to see what we could get. I think Paula might have sat on that, that committee.
We interviewed, we interviewed people for it.
Yeah, we got anywhere from, you know.
Right. Were worthy of the, you know, the, the money that we had said we would allocate. So just, we were going to go back to.
We just never did really after that, because it was such a difference in what we might need to draw better talent.
Also part of using Weston and Sampson too, right? Was to take some of those kind of responsibilities.
Yeah, we did some of that by bringing, well, actually, EP, Environmental Partners came in, yeah, so similar idea, though, yeah, so we have, we, we, before you got here Charlie, we looked at a lot of different things, and Roy was a part of that, the track group was a part of that, just trying to figure out, you know, where we had some gaps. And some of the things I, that I think they came up with, and it was mostly the, the people that were at the track meeting was, of course, engineering was, was an issue, we, we solved that to some degree. Conservation, we didn't have a conservation agent, you know, at that time, so they were able to go out and, and get one. But yeah, this is, you know, and I, I agree with, you know, what we're saying, like, you know, how are we going to fill this role at tho, those types of numbers? But it's, you know, and it gets, it seems to be getting more and more important to have somebody in place to do something. So, yeah, I don't know what you do or how you, you know, figure it out. I mean, we know what the numbers are looking at, and they've probably increased. I mean, no salaries go down right over the course of a few years, but it is, it is vitally important to, especially in the directions we're going with development, and Roy could probably speak to this as well, I'd like to hear his thoughts. But, you know, a town planner is, you know, is, is going to help us in, in so many different ways with not just what we're developing, but passes of land that, and, you know, we just talked about one, right? Like, that would be something that would be helpful. But, yeah, Roy, while you're here, I mean, what are your thoughts? I mean, probably the same as mine, but.
So, so I'll agree that the, the financial issue is, is obviously the, one of the big issues. I, I think the town meeting had approved a couple of years ago now, a potential number like 75 to 85 starting range, or something like that, that as, as it turns out, no one that was willing to accept the job in that price range was qualified to do what we wanted to do. And, and a further survey indicates that most of the area towns, and we're one of the few towns in all of Southeastern Massachusetts without a staff planner. We're, we're right at the end of the list these days. But all of them gets paid somewhere in the range of, of $95,000 to $120,000.
Yep.
The other part of that is, we, we've got two major things going on right now, actually three, depending on how you want to look at it, but one of those is the MBTA Communities Law. We've got several part-time people that are volunteer people that, that are working on this, i.e. members of the planning board. We've got OCPC that has given us a, a slice of time and been very helpful in, in putting together some initial maps. It's an extremely complex bylaw. We'll stay away from the, the legalese that's associated with it, because that's extremely cumbersome and seems to be evolving over time. The bottom line is, the town has to do something prior to the end of 2024, based on the current law. And we are working on that and, and planning on sometime in the spring and having some, some town roundtables, public roundtables to, to show us what we've got so far. We've also applied for help from a group called CHAPA, CHAPA they call themselves. They're a group Citizen Housing and Planning Association. They actually just responded to our application via email today, and they have a massive website with links to literally hundreds and hundreds of documents.
Right.
The plan is that they will put someone available to talk to with each town that they agree to help out. I'm hoping since, since we indicated in the application, which I completed, that we don't have a town planner on staff, that we'll be one of those towns that they agree to provide a one-on-one mentor to help us out with what's going on, because again, things are changing so fast. But, but without a full-time planner, which most of the towns have doing this, i.e. the MBTA Communities Bylaw, we're in a, we're in a difficult place. I mean, that there's some experience on the planning board that understands, I believe, how this needs to work in terms of East Bridgewater. But, but again, without a planning board, I mean, without a planner available to the planning board to, to work on this, we're in a difficult position.
Yep. Okay.
And again, continuing on, I agree, like I said, we talked town planner when I was up there, but there, there just comes a point when we, where does the money come from? And we've already, we haven't heard any official numbers from the state, except we know we're not going to be in a good position. I'm not too sure, we have to concern ourselves with, we have a whole bunch of contracts and everything coming up too, and contracts we haven't even finished negotiating yet. You know, to try to add something at this time, I, I just, and, and, don't get me wrong, do we need this, yeah, we need this position, we needed it 20 years ago too. But it's like everything else, it's, I just don't know where the timing is going to be on this one.
No, it's a tough one. I wish we could.
So, let me, can I, can I just add a, a little bit of another comment, and, and I'm not a financial wizard by any means, but one of the things that we do find is that most of the towns gear their fees that are charged for applications to their boards and, and departments, based on what the overall cost of their planning building department budget is. With the idea that since planning building department budgets are effectively providing value-added services to citizens and builders, developers, whoever that may be, that they take that budget and divvy that budget up over all of the various fees that come in. All of the towns that have planners charge significantly more fees than we do. So one of the areas that, that, that we could certainly explore, and we've raised our fees in the past, but, but it's, it's our feeling that if we're not going to have a planner on staff, with staff, we can't be charging more in fees than it costs us to pay for our department. In a lot of the 40 years that I've been on the planning board, our department actually made money. In terms of, if you take the fees that go into the general fund versus the amount of money that's paid out for the department, we're collecting more money than, than we're paying for, for the department members. And I don't see any reason that that would change. If the, if the budget for the department goes up because we had a planner on board, then the fees have to go up. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that a developer or even an individual homeowner that's filing something for a, a variance or a special permit for work done in his own home, it doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to have to pay more. It would mean at least theoretically that we wouldn't pay as much to an outside firm, in, in our case right now, Environmental Partners, to have to review stuff if we had a qualified planner on board within the department. So, and I'm not going to try and say that that would cover the whole 125,000, 120,000, whatever it is, 100,000. But certainly would put a significant dent in that if, if we changed our fee structure, because that would change the, the base cost of the planning building department in the town.
So Charlie, if you don't mind, I have just a question. Where would, let's say, a, a town planner sit, it would, as far as, in the building department, under Patrick, and the, I mean, where, where would the chain of command go typically?
I'd have to go and ask how other communities handle it, whether it's someone who reports to the town administrator, whether it's someone who reports to the planning board. I, it's a different, obviously, it's a different set of issues than the ones, for the most part, that Patrick, which, you know, like, does handle zoning, but a lot of it is the building itself, which we're not going to have a town planner review building plans in the same way one engineering, but Patrick, like, as an example. So I'd have to ask.
Yeah, because I think, I, I, to Roy's point, you know, if we kind of knew where, you know, that, that direction could come, and there were certainly areas that we could generate more funding, that would, would help with the, you know, with that position, and I, you know, I think we should take a look at that.
We can plan to have a planner.
Right, at least have an idea.
And explore how that could fit into our organization.
Right, I think we need some homework.
There's no harm in looking at that.
Some homework done on this to see how we can possibly accomplish this, and again, with the, with the, you know.
Not this July, but, you know.
Well, no, but we, we can get the.
But we can do some work.
Start the paperwork getting done and stuff like that. I don't think it's going to take a lot to find out what these other towns are doing.
Right.
Did they increase their fees at that time? Did they prove?
Yep.
You know, that they are paying for themselves? You know, these, you know, the fees we're paying for the planner position?
Yep.
Those are the things we'd have to look at before we can go with this one way or the other.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, and any town planner I've ever worked for has always been someone who's very skilled at grants, so there's the potential that they're bringing in some money, you know, to cover some.
Those kinds of areas, yeah.
You know, I'm not saying that's a, you know, but it definitely opens up some opportunities with that.
Yeah, there's a couple of instances where engineers that I knew or that we're working with in different, like, the guy that used to do my meetings was an engineer, and he, he went to Cohasset as part-time planner slash engineer for a while, and then turned into a full-time. And I know someone else that that happened, I know it's, but some, sometimes that's, if engineers are working on their own or whatever, and then to be able to start working, you know, and still be able to do some other things, I don't know, that was, I've seen that happen twice now with people that I, I was working with went and did that places.
It probably would be a bad discussion to have with the track group at their next meeting, around their agenda, and have them kick it around to see what, you know, where we could start getting them all rolling.
What, 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 what we're currently giving for the engineering oversight, and then what you could possibly get from increasing the fees, and also the upcoming, like, over the next three to five years, there's going to, it appears that there'll be some good construction going on, you know, as far as the projects that have started, and that's also, fees like that, you can capture in, you know, large commercial and stuff like that. Like, we, the need for a planner is really, really strong.
I think we start there.
No question about that.
Right, start with, with that group, Charlie, see what they can put it on there, and, you know, whoever's available can, can sit in and, and kind of figure out where we start finding, where the, where the means come from, because Roy said, to his point, that if we can start cutting back on some of that, that idea, at least we know where the starting point is.
Right.
We have to make up, we have no idea right now.
Okay. Is that it?
It's in on the list, yep.
All right, that is the end of action items. Rebecca, announcements?
No announcements.
No announcements. Charlie, now give us the bad news.
Well, I'll give you the other new pieces of news first, before we get to the bad news. Turf field project, obviously, the bidding is ongoing, as I mentioned, we should have bids in February 13th at noon. Capital Plan Committee is meeting with Brian and with, as far as I know, representatives from East Bridgewater Public Schools to discuss the project as a whole, but also, I know there's some questions about whether we should be doing a turf replacement, or whether we should be bringing a grass field. Obviously, that presents a whole different set of problems in terms of water and irrigation and everything else, but that conversation's happening upstairs, or has already happened, I don't know. Let's see, master plan update, we have survey work is continuing in the sense of we're get, we're continuing to get surveys, we've had more than 600 responses so far, so we're still looking for more. We have paper surveys here at Town Hall, the library, and the Council on Aging for folks who just aren't comfortable using a computer to do an online survey, we have them here, people can return them here. There are public meetings with the Master Plan Committee on Thursday, February 22nd at 6:30 here at Town Hall, then there's a virtual meeting on Wednesday, March 6th at 6:30. These are workshops for the general public, there are committee meetings over here, but we'll get those schedules set. But just as we had one last week here at Town Hall, we'll have two more as progress occurs on the master plan, working with all the county planning council, and anyone who's interested is welcome to attend the in-person or the virtual meeting or both. Speaking of the committee, Donald Nelson from 30 Stonebridge Way had contacted the Select Board's office during the weekend, saying he was interested in serving on the committee, I would recommend if the board has any interest. We have five members right now, I didn't want to go beyond seven, but that would make it only six at this point. I may check with OCPC, they'd welcome another member on the committee.
Yeah, Don's an engineer, I imagine he brings some good experience to that committee.
So the board wanted to vote that tonight.
I'll make a motion, have Don Nelson.
Nelson.
Nelson is a member of the, switch, which is the name?
Master Plan Committee.
Master Plan Committee.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, Don.
I think it'd be a great answer.
ADA Self-Evaluation Transition Plan, we've got in some, a little publicity already about that, was, I think buzz around earlier today. We're sort of doing a soft opening for the survey, again, it's another online survey, we'll have it available in print too. But we're going to get that up and running really at the beginning of February, for the month of February, to get as much input from community as possible. There's a digital equity implement, implementation workshop in Boston, but it's all day on the 24th Wednesday. As much as, if anybody from the town is going to be trying to learn more and get things implemented, it's probably going to end up being me, the problem is, I think the board's well aware of how many other pots I've got on the stove right now, and I don't know that I have a full day that I can spend on one subject at this point. I'll see whether I can get any information from that program rather than attending, but we'll see. Capital Plan, I did not submit an article for the cottage removal, mostly because I completely forgot about it, again, I know the board, the board members have mentioned it from time to time. If you want, I can, I'll ask that a placeholder article be put, be put on the warrant, doesn't mean it stays on the warrant, and start the invitation for bid process, I have a prototype from another community that I got in a couple of months ago. There's maybe, Melanie mentioned probably about a million dollars in free cash that we're going to use for capital projects. I just don't, and I understand we want to be gone, I also understand, again, fiscal constraints, whether that versus the other things we want to do on capital planning is going to be important enough to be up on the list. So I wanted a go or no go, at least on getting an invitation for bid out and, and sending a note to the.
My name is Michelle Scott, I'm the manager.
Send Capital Planning Committee a note saying, please put this on your list for now.
Yeah, so, I don't know, backing up four years ago, whatever it was, we originally talked about, you know, having, selling it.
Yep.
Seeing if somebody, we've already gone through that process.
There's no market.
Yeah, we know that.
Nobody wants.
But I think that was what a certain person told us that we had to do that, like, no, they didn't know well, or somewhere like that, they put the building up for, for sale.
Yeah.
Any takers, if they bought it for whatever the nominal price was.
They would take it away.
Then they have to remove it.
Right.
Right.
So I thought we were, had already, you know, did, did we, we went through that process.
Yeah, we did.
So we're done there.
Yeah.
We don't have anything to worry about other than finding someone now, because nobody's stepped up.
Which means we have to pay to get rid of it.
Right, we have to take it up. So my only thought towards it now is, now we're in a, you know, a few years later, and we're talking about a new school, right? So if it ends up being that we're not going to keep this school, we could probably just, it's going to have to be knocked down, I would assume.
Ooh, can we roll that into the building cost to the renovation of Central School?
If we need the property, then.
Yeah, I mean, that would probably be the smarter of the move to see what happens with the school.
If we're going to expand.
Right, just have them back up.
What's another four years?
That's right, at this point, right, I mean.
I never had time wanting to spend money to take something down when there are other projects that actually adding services to the town.
Yeah, I would certainly wait and see what.
Just wait on that one first. Maybe it's three or something.
I will move on to the bad news.
The insurance will cover it.
Unfortunately, Melanie contacted me a little before the meeting to say that as bad as this news is, it doesn't get any better.
Thanks a lot, Melanie.
Yeah.
You know that she's not here to back it up.
Right, well, I think she's up at Capital Planning.
Which probably isn't any more fun than this.
So Melanie, myself, Dan, had worked on sort of looking at the budget high up. These are not based on individual budget submissions. This is looking at the revenue picture for the town that we expect in fiscal '25 versus what we spent, where we're spending in fiscal '24 with some changes and some knowledge of the big budget items. We know what the property tax revenues are going to be. We have a better idea of local aid. We know now that the unrestricted general government assistance, UGA, is going to, according to, Governor Haley's putting in for 3%. So we're going to, we should, if that works, get at least a $53,000 increase in state aid. That does not include Chapter 70. We will find that out Wednesday or Thursday this week.
Yep.
We are continuing to lower the amount of free cash we're using for the operating budget. Because the idea is we're getting out of that business, free cash needs to be devoted to the capital plan. You know, there are adjustments for the overlay. We're not using stabilization. So that represents, means that we've got maybe about a million dollars more in revenue for fiscal '25 than we do for '24 right now. Obviously, things can change, like getting Chapter 70 money, but that's where we're at right now in terms of additional money. We know, we have an estimate on the health insurance. The GIC meeting this month said, we're expecting something on the order of a 9% increase. We've put that in. They will vote at the end of February on the actual rates. Then that information plus administrative fees and such will be given to Megan. Megan can then look at our membership, who's, how many people are in each type of plan, family, individual, and get an actual number. But for right now, we need to use the 9% estimate for health insurance increase. It may be a little bit less. It might be eight, it might be seven. If someone's thinking it's two or three, it's not happening. Plymouth County Retirement Increase, we had the normal increase that we expected. We then, because the cities and towns in Plymouth County voted the COLAR increase for fiscal '24 from 3% to 5%, we have a surcharge of another $88,000 in addition to what we already thought we were going to get. So there's an increase in our Plymouth County retirement assessment by a bit over $400,000. I've put an arbitrary amount for East Bridgewater Public Schools. This is nobody else's number but mine. It's there as a placeholder to say, hi, we're going to increase the budget. I mean, there's no question about that, but I'm starting off saying, if you take the school budget, you take out Chapter 70, all their other sources of income, the circuit breaker money for special ed, tuition in and everything, about half the budget comes from, in essence, the property tax. If I multiply that by 2%, that's your 260. Doesn't mean that that's what the town ultimately is going to be doing. It doesn't mean what that's what the schools are going to be actually asking for, but I gave that as an example. If someone says, well, I think that should be a lot more, well, that will have an effect on the bottom lines. Because even with 260, you'll notice what the bottom line looks like.
Yep.
There's also contractual increases. What Melanie did, again, not looking at every single budget, but saying, here's the payroll for everybody outside the school system. If I multiply that by 3%, because we have contracts that are various pay hikes, we have people moving up in steps, we have people moving up and getting stipends for licenses and such. Let's put in 3% as a fairly decent, you know, fairly good estimate is what the payroll is going to go up. And that's that. It also includes in that $291,000, the contracts we've not yet signed. We know contracts we've already signed, but we don't have any decision on this, not asking for one tonight, certainly. What are we doing for across-the-board increase for the non-union employees? What are we doing about the six department heads? Five of whom we have new contracts coming up, one we have to determine salary level for this coming year. We have the library union that's, we're just starting out on a contract with them. The patrol officers, we're still in negotiations, not just for '24, but now for '25. Everything would need to fit within that $291,000. Bottom line, you, you paid out a 3% overall increase in salaries. You gave East Bridgewater Public Schools that amount of money. You pay the retirement assessment, you pay the insurance amount, we're in the hole of about $350,000.
Should be.
It goes to town planner.
Right. What Melanie wrote to me was.
You sure we can't sell that Gladys Farron cottage? You mean, just get a little.
Well, it's antique, you know, we'll put it on eBay, I don't know.
It is antique.
What Melanie, however, is getting now, and it's just about completed, are the budgets from all the departments. And she says, whatever I'm giving you today is not, is better than you're going to get tomorrow, in essence. If I gave you the same table tomorrow with the actual budget outside of the school, that bottom line would be far worse. So I'm not, there's, I'm not asking for any decisions and I need to go into exact, when we'll talk about contracts and the implications of these numbers, but it will be, what I've told people is, I wasn't here in '09 and '10, of course, I was next door, but '09 and '10 were very, very difficult years. This will at least be at least the same level of difficulty of balancing a budget this coming year as there was 15 years ago. I'm sure we had some challenges here in East Bridgewater too.
We did.
Oh, zero.
I, I've commuted, you know, we had a meeting with the school department, Melanie, Dan, myself, last week. I talked with the department heads last week. I've made, I've made sure council's aware of this, some labor negotiations and such. Talked with the finance committee last week. So there's, everybody, and this is, this is pretty much though, obviously, things change week to week. Like, we didn't know what the state aid number was for UGA. But conceptually, they understand that we're all going to be in a difficult situation. So no one's not in the loop that I think should be in the loop about this. And we'll get there. I mean, I tell people on May 14th, I will be back here at work. We'll have town meeting the night before, we'll have a budget. You know, there's some things that might be helpful, you know, for instance, if we, you know, if we get the handsome land organized and sell that and agree to draw it down over a five-year period, that would help immensely in covering this deficit. But the problem in timing is, we're having our meeting in May. It might be summer before we sell the land and then we work with the Department of Revenue and Local Services on how we make sure we can use that money to help balance the budget in those, the five years that we've got until fiscal '30, when the sun will come up that morning in fiscal '30. It's five years in the darkness, however, to some extent. So I'm sorry to give you this bad news.
Thanks, Charlie.
You're very welcome. You know, I'll see you in three and a half.
Like January wasn't bleak enough.
Right, well, it is, there are longer days, believe me, I, my, my, my friend here notices it's far easier driving this week than it was three weeks ago.
It's true, it is.
That settles everything.
Yes, it does.
It's not dark when I drive home now.
Look, what do you want me to do, life of Brian and sing, you know, while I'm singing on the cross there?
Could you?
Yeah, please.
Look at the bright side of life.
Always look at the bright side of life. Got to get the whistle in. All right.
The only question I would have would be, as a bulk of this deficit coming from just mostly from Plymouth County and what we've.
Health insurance number is higher than we expected it to be. I don't think anybody was thinking it was going to be 9%.
Okay.
Retirement, but we already knew what the retirement was a year, you know, you could have asked me back in May, we knew that. We just didn't know about the $88,000, for instance. It's, so there are, you know, there are several things going on at the same time. We're lowering the amount of free cash because we made a policy decision that we needed to get out of using free cash for operating. Why? Because then we can't use it for capital funding. If we don't have enough money for the capital plan, we then borrow the money. However, we start borrowing too much and then you get principal and interest every year to pay, which then gnaws into your normal operating budget.
Right.
So we, we need to get out of the business of borrowing money for our everyday capital items. I don't mean if we do something with Central School. That's a debt exclusion. What I'm talking about is even a million-dollar project, either it's going to fit in or we're going to debt exclude it. We, we have to stop borrowing from, in our payment for principal and interest, our operating budget. Because we've got too many things that we're trying to do on an everyday basis with our operating budget to afford paying principal and interest on the capital plan.
Yeah, because the, I mean, I don't know, I just, it seems like the growth over the course of the last two years has continued to go this way, but yet our, you know, what we're bringing in or what we're seeing here is going the opposite way. So, I mean, from the outside looking in, it's just hard to gather. I mean, we go from $125,000 from Greystar a year ago to 400 and whatever this year. And we're, I mean, where's the number that we're chasing in order to, you know, make that work?
Well, I think, you know, for Greystar, I think we are probably, depending on how everything falls out with, obviously, we've got the aid from the state, we've got the aid from the Fed, maybe we get some money from the various properties in town. I think that's going to lower the principal and interest payments we're doing for the sanitary sewer. And that Greystar, if that's correct, Greystar will more, by itself, Greystar will create a surplus that can be used for other things.
Right, yeah, and, and along with that too, we should, and I'm glad Paul's here now, we should be looking at money from the building from the Shaw's warehouse at some point too. I mean, you know, I, I don't know, I just don't want to paint a picture like, hey, listen, we're in hell here for five years. And I don't believe that's true, not for a second. Because what I'm seeing out there and what we're, you know, working on and some of the permitting that's going on, and maybe Roy sees some of the stuff at the building office as well, it just seems like some of these projects are continuing to come and be permitted and moving there. So those have to come into play, I mean, unless we're just spending more than, you know, we're just throwing money out the window.
Well, I don't think we ever threw money out the window. However, I think we did raise the thermostat slightly, so to speak. We were, you know, for instance, in terms of dealing with our employees, going through the COVID period, knowing that we needed to retain and recruit people and we needed to pay decent wages, maybe not truly competitive with, you know, the northern tier of the South Shore or anything, but certainly competitive with many of our nearby communities. And so that we might have put in pay raises or contracts that were slightly more than what we had been dealing with in previous years. But we did that in order to, in fact, get good, effective people working for the town.
Right.
But, you know, that bill is due and will be continued to do. I, yeah, I think how much growth we can see in the commercial sector and everything is going to make a major difference during the next five years is how well we can get through those five years.
Right.
But we're going to see continued challenges. So for instance, the schools right now, we have, using ARCA funds, we had $300,000 for the additional counselors a year. We're in now, we'll have another 300 next year in '25. But that money will not be there in fiscal '26. So automatically in fiscal '26 for the schools, we'll have a $300,000 hole that we'll need to fill, unless they're going to lay those people off. I think obviously, what we know, we're dealing with kids of all ages at this point, it'd be a very difficult decision to make, whether it's lay them off or lay anybody, and I'm not suggesting anybody lay anybody off. I'm just simply saying, I'm going to point at 300,000 that won't be there and you're going to make a decision whether to fund that or fund something else. And that's not, this coming year, that's already in '26, we know of it. We know the retirement system, we're going to get, unless something, you know, the market has been very kind to us, obviously, this year, and that's going to help, I think, pay down or maybe reduce the assessments overall during the next few years. We'll see how that plays out. But right now, the projection is a 7% increase in the retirement assessments through those five years. Maybe things will get better.
Yeah, that was, you stepped into my next question too with, with, you know, the group that we use, Bartholomew, I think, is what the.
Yes.
The, you know, I mean, it's, and I brought this up a few times. It'd be nice to see where we're at, you know, get a review from them. I think they've been here once.
Yeah.
It's our, Bartholomew's our investment group that does all our investments.
Yeah, they've been in here a couple of years back.
Yeah, it's been a while. I mean, because it just seems like there are other factors here that we're not getting, I'm not getting the whole picture. I'm just getting, you know, bits and pieces and, you know, you know how it is. You go to meetings, you know, five days a week on, on these things and you wonder, you know, where's the, where's the outcome?
Right.
The positive outcome that we're looking for in order to see some of this stuff happen. So, you know, again, you know, we can talk a little bit more about the Greystar or the project on '18 and what we're looking at going forward. I think we talked a little bit about ARCA, maybe we redirect some funds and we could certainly use them in the, in the sewer project. I mean, it fits right into what we're going, but I think we can.
Somebody else has mentioned paying down, you know, instead of borrowing so much or using stabilization for the turf field, assuming we do that.
Could be a possibility there, yeah. I think there's other areas, and I know you're working on it, Sean, I'm not saying you're not. I know the, the finance committee, I talk to Dan quite often, and I stop in here and talk to Paul and Melanie. And, you know, I think that there's, there's ways to do this. Is it going to get rid of this whole deficit? And we not need to find ways to be creative in the coming years? No. But at the same time, I think we've got other things going on that other towns don't have the same, you know, abilities, I guess is the best word to do it.
We have a number of opportunities.
Exactly, thank you. I think we just need to continue working towards that and hoping that, you know, we can, we can get that done without, you know, everything crashing in the next meeting. The last thing we want to see is the people that we brought in the last few years start to say, well, wait a second.
Absolutely.
Norwell looks a little bit better.
No, our people are our best asset.
Can't get any, do you know how difficult it is to travel in Orwell?
Yeah, I just threw that out. I always throw Norwell for some reason, but, yeah, you know what I'm saying. We've worked really hard over the last four or five years to bring in those positions and those people that we think are, you know, the ones that we need to move us forward. And it has been, it's been working out really well, which is a matter of, you know, this gets thrown at you and you're just like, I quit.
Yeah.
What else am I supposed to do here? But, yeah, so I think if we just continue moving, I think there's creative ways we can come out of it. Hopefully, that's it.
Good. David, any?
I'm done.
Okay, board discussion. Charlie, was that it for you?
Um.
Or anything else?
Yes.
Did you bring us up? Nothing?
I didn't get you anything, no, sorry.
You're supposed to save like something.
No, you were supposed to bring stuff from the convention.
What's what?
All the tchotchkes.
Oh.
All the tchotchkes.
Oh, I did. Dale's got a whole bag of swag upstairs. Board discussions?
Yeah. We had talked a while back that there was a, what appeared to be a payroll problem in the school system. And I know we had talked about it on three or four different occasions, saying, all right, let's see what's going to happen over there. You know, but it's a payroll problem, it's a town problem. We haven't heard anything, we haven't seen anything. We know they've gone into executive session, we haven't seen anything come out of that. So I think at this stage of the game, and then, you know, listen to you guys, we have to do something as a select board. If it was a payroll system that affected town, we have to talk to our town council, ask them to get their hands wet on this one and let's see what's going on. If there's no problem, that's fine. Let's be told there's absolutely no problem. But when that was brought to our attention, I think we were a little lax on saying, let someone else do it. We probably should have done it ourselves. And that was, I think, the time to do it.
Yeah, I mean, we were glad you brought it up. So, yeah, it's, you know, I think that, as David said to his point, you know, there was some sort of error that was, was big enough for, you know, it brought to your attention and brought to town council's attention. We certainly, you know, I don't know what the prob, I'd like to know a little bit more, you know, what the actual problem was and the people that were involved in that problem. So, yeah, I think what David, I agree with him. I think that if you get a hold of, you know, we put it on the agenda for the next meeting for sure to discuss. You talk to Clifford and Kenny, find out any information that they maybe will find out, whether it be from the schools. They have done something, I'm not sure what that is. And, you know, like I said, we get that information back. I think by next meeting, we could, you know, discuss if we need to do something or if we feel like, you know, everything's been handled here. But, yeah, it has been, and these things happen that way though. You go in executive session and it's like the black hole, forget it, right? It's gone. So, yeah, let's see what the, what the problem was. And I think that's, you know, put, put it on, put it on your hands to let us know. And if we add it to the agenda, I think we can talk about it then, that's all.
Okay. There is something on the school committee's agenda tomorrow night that's a statement from the chair of the school committee. I don't know what that is.
Well, that could be anything.
It could be.
Okay.
I would suggest that we tune in and see what happens at their meeting tomorrow night.
Just trying to get.
Just because that's vague and I don't know what that might be.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, maybe, but I, I did ask after their executive session if there was anything that was public information and I was told that they could not, there could be no comment yet.
Good, in that case, I'm, it's up to us to follow up then.
Okay, anything else from you? How about you? What you got?
Yeah, I had, so my question just was, I know we had John, I can call, certainly talk to John, but I wanted to bring it to you. He may have to have a discussion with you. We all go to town cleaners and Craig Cambieson wants to know, you know, some information. He's the gentleman that runs the cleaners. So that's on the corner of, what, Union Street and, not Union.
North Central.
North Central, and what's the cut down?
Union.
Union, okay, that's right.
Yeah, West Union, Union, North.
I know we had talked, and maybe Roy knows a little bit too, or somebody, there was going to be either a light or a stop or.
The, the light would turn from a yellow and red blinking to a, to blinking red on both ends with stop signs at all four corners.
So that processes.
I can ask John. I suspect he has the stuff on.
Sorry, I was thinking about that the other day.
Yeah, he asked me what was going on. And, yeah, just so we can let the public know, because there's been some, you know, not just Craig, but there's been other people in that corner just wondering what the scenario is there and what the long-term, you know, vision there is. Is it going to be an actual light or is it just going to? Is it going to be an actual light or is it just going to be?
A four-way stop.
Yeah, it's, it's a blink, it'll be a blinking red light on all four.
Okay, with stop signs in each corner.
Yeah.
It'll be gradual change, too, because they'll.
Yeah.
Each step, they'll make sure, everybody will be aware of what's going on.
Yeah, just where we are in the process.
Well, actually, we need, we need the revenue, so we're going to have a police officer there and.
Give out tickets?
One of the dispatches.
Can we cover a town planner salary with?
And again, one of the problems I see.
Good to get out, just get it out to the public.
I go through there all the time, the people that have the yellow light still stop because they see the other people stopping, and they, and that's what's causing all the accidents over the years.
Yeah, well, not, and the people just fly right through the.
Either they stop or they go.
Yeah, either stop or don't stop. Right, one of the two. Yeah, I mean, up there, I think would help.
Anything else? I just wanted to point out, because I, this, I've seen people say recently that we're terrible at getting information out to people, and that makes me frustrated because I think we've done such a change and turnaround with our website compared to the way it used to be and our Facebook presence and, and other things, but I just want to, I don't, explain to people about how you can go on the town website and you can subscribe, and you will get an email for every department that posts an agenda. And can you get those for minutes, too? So there's no reason for anybody to feel uninformed or like, "We're trying to hide anything or we're not getting information out." It's there. I mean, do you have to do some homework yourself to, to get to that point? But, I mean, literally, it takes less than five minutes. Dale, even you could do it. But, no, you go, you, you know, and you just put in your email address and you select, "These are the, these are the committees and boards I want to get minutes and agendas from," and then you get an email, so.
But one of the problems, and I know exactly what you're saying, but one of the problems, we have a large, you know, senior.
This was not a senior.
I understand that. We have, we have a large senior population in East Bridgewater who are used to a weekly something coming out with all this information. Now they're lost, some of them just can't adapt to technology.
No, and I understand that, and I, and I'm not.
But the younger people, you're right, we have done, over the last few years, magnificent job bringing people up.
Right.
To any information they want to get, it's there.
It's the, it's the sort of this, like, trying to combat this, like, underlying, like, conspiracy of, like, that the government is trying to hide things or keep secrets, and I don't want anybody to think that because, you know, I mean, I got on this board six years ago because I said I wanted transparency, and I think we've done so much, all of us, and you were doing the work before I was here, and, you know, all of us, and Charlie and Rebecca, to make sure everybody knows as much as they can about what's going on. And I know nobody watches these, probably, but.
Well, that's.
For the people who do, if you don't understand how to do this, you can call the town administrator's office, and they'll be happy to explain it to you and walk you through it.
Or even call the town administrator's office, call the select board office, call any office that you think is the appropriate office. We've got people who are very happy to answer arcane questions, whatever it is. You don't have to wait for a set of minutes, you don't have to wait for an agenda, call us up. But I think one of the important points, you know, is how do you residents want the information to get to you? If you feel, "I don't get to find out what's going on," how would you want to get that information? Because, you know, we, you mentioned, it's not just agendas and minutes. We have a subscription list. When we put news up on the town website, as an example, you can subscribe to that. So if there's an announcement about trash delays, for instance, or something like that, you can get that announcement by email.
The DPW has an app.
Yeah.
You know, you can.
Because I do want to get that information out. The challenge is, there's now a variety of ways. I mean, back when, you know, dinosaurs ruled the earth, we, you know, when I was in Halifax, we had the Brockton Enterprise in the Patriot Ledger at every Board of Selectment meeting, and that, you know, we had the weekly paper also. So there were plenty of, you know, venues, but those, you know, we don't get that coverage as an example, so that those ways of finding out what's happening have disappeared. I know plenty of people get information about East Bridgewater, not just from our Facebook page, but the larger group pages. And I don't, you know, that will be a topic for another occasion.
Well, yeah, I wasn't referencing.
No, I understand that, but the thing, you know, what, you know, it's one of the challenges, you, you have to go to where the people actually are.
Right.
Instead of trying to pull them where you want them.
True.
You go there and visit them where they are rather than the other way around.
Right. I'm just thinking about, you know, we're at the end of January, we're, we're ramping up for town meeting, right? We're hitting budget season, and this is when people start maybe paying attention a little bit more to, to what they want to know and what they think they aren't being told, and I don't want anybody to come into town meeting and think that, you know, this is new information, that, that everything that's on that town meeting warrant when we get there is something that some committee or board has talked about multiple times before.
Right. And, you know, we're, as an example, our meeting tonight's being taped. It will, you can get it on, you, you don't have to be a cable subscriber, you can get it on YouTube, you can get it through the EV cam website. Same thing with the finance committee meetings, as an example, so that the information is out there if people want to go to these places.
Yep. Well, that's my.
Good point.
Yes, okay.